March 19th, it's now March 23rd. We're holding the meeting remotely pursuant to RSA 91A colon 3, colon Roman 3 dash little B, that's otherwise known as the emergency meeting rule. Governor Sununu on March 13th issued executive order 2020 dash 14 regarding the coronavirus. Item 8 of that order encourages local government bodies to utilize that emergency meeting provision. So we avoid, I guess, meetings in public and in respect to the distancing rules. So I understand there's a quorum of all the board members here tonight. Can you announce your names, please?
Kerry Swanson.
Elizabeth McKinney.
You're done mute, unmute Kim.
Kimberly Shelton.
And I guess that's it. And Dr. Givens is with us as well. So and Dave Jack is with us. He's our interim business professional. And the law also requires an emergency meeting that we that we hold it because we need to address something that's timely. And there are at least two things on our agenda tonight that qualify for that, including the certified staff nominations and approval of the school calendar and transportation contract as well. So with that, I'm going to defer the pledge of allegiance for tonight. It's kind of awkward to all do that at once. And the first order of business, this is our reorganization meeting, is election of a chair and a vice chair. I would entertain any motions for the chair.
I make a motion to nominate Mike Kennison as the chair.
I second that motion.
Okay, and we're gonna have to do this by roll call vote. Before we do that, is there any further discussion?
Nope.
No.
Okay, and rather than me announcing the names, could each person say their name and how they vote? Mike Kennison votes yes.
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Kerry Swanson, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay, thank you. And now we gotta move on and elect a vice chair. Are there any motions for a vice chair?
I nominate Elizabeth McKinney for vice chair.
Kerry Swanson, second.
Any discussion? Okay, again, by roll call vote, Mike Kennison, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Kerry Swanson, yes.
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay, there it is. Thank you. So the next item we have is to do the board committee assignment. Now, there's a list on the second page of our agenda of the committees. I see that it's an old list. Some of those committees are now, you know, have their purpose has gone by. We've done the first two. We need a school board budget committee representative. I I'm interested in that myself. I'd like to focus on trying to simplify that process this term, making it clear to the the budget committee and in the public alike, you know, all the applicable rules that apply. I served on it a couple of years ago, so I'd be interested in doing that. Is any further discussion or comment? Chime in.
None.
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 Okay, and we don't have to vote on these, so I'll put I'll put myself down as the as the rep to the budget committee. And then we need an alternate. Is there anybody who would like to be an alternate for that?
I'm willing to be the alternate, Kerry.
Don't everybody jump up at once.
That sounds good to me. That sounds good to me, Kerry. Kerry was just on the budget committee and is familiar with it, so that would that would make some sense. So if everybody's okay with that, Kerry will be the alternate to the budget committee.
Makes sense to me.
Sounds good.
Then next is the policy committee. And Kim, I know you've been on that for a while. I don't know what your interest is. You would like to stay there?
It might be good, Mike, to have some of the new, at least one of the newer members on that as well, because it's a great way to learn about the policies that we have. I would definitely be willing to do it, but I'd like to possibly have a second of one of the newer members if we could. And I'd also like to do the staff development committee representative, if I could do that, too.
Okay.
This is Amy. I can do that for the policy committee with Kim, or if she just wants me to do it, I can do it myself.
I'll do it with you, Amy.
Okay.
So I'm not hearing everybody, but that's, so just let me know.
You're not hearing?
Elizabeth, can you hear us? I'm just gonna see if she can dial in.
Gary, are you not hearing?
Well, I hear fine. I was asking if.
Oh, okay.
Bring anyone.
No, I'm just, I just, I just asked Elizabeth if she could try to dial in like I'm doing. Dr. Givens, are you with us? Can anybody hear Dr. Givens?
Yep, I'm here. I just have my mic off. There's no reception.
I think Elizabeth's back as well.
I think I'm back now, yeah.
Okay, I can hear you. Okay, so Amy, thank you for volunteering for the policy committee, and Ken, thanks for continuing to serve. The next up is the building committee. And that makes sense for me to stay on that, since hopefully we only have a couple of months left of that, really. And so if everybody's all right, I'll just stay on the building committee.
Okay, I'm not hearing anything.
I'm in favor of that.
I haven't heard a thing that we've said.
Can you hear me, Elizabeth?
So I don't know what's happening on my part.
Does everybody else, Amy, could you hear?
I can hear that, yes. I'm in favor of that, Mike.
Okay, Kim, are you?
I'm absolutely for that continuity, Mike.
I don't envision any objections from Elizabeth, so we'll move on, I guess, and go next to the school board rep to the SFT. Elizabeth, are you on with us?
I can hear you now. I don't know what the headset is coming in and out.
Do you have any interest in the SFT rep position?
Or do you?
Who?
Okay, was there anybody else that has any interest in that? Or we need only one person.
Okay.
No, it's fine.
Okay, so Elizabeth, we'll, we'll, we'll put you into that.
All right, am I still on the entry plan as well? Have we done that yet?
Yeah, I know those aren't on the list, but we should, we should address those. We'll address the entry plan and communications at the end. I'm just, I'm working my way down the list on the second page.
Right, I don't have anything because my Google account is gone. So that's, I'm flying blind right now.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll just read them off. So then, so the next one up is the district staff development committee rep. Is there any interest in that?
I'd like to continue on that one if I could.
Okay, we'll put Kim down for that. Any, I think, Kim, we only had one on that traditionally.
That's true.
Yeah. The next one is the New Hampshire School Board Association delegate. That does not, that typically involves one meeting a year. The New Hampshire School Board Association meet, I thought it was in the fall, and they, they come up with proposed legislation to be submitted to the state. It's, it's typically a one meeting event. Is there any interest in that?
I can do that, Mike. It's Amy.
Okay, all right, Amy, thank you. And we can get, we'll get you more information on the, on the details of that. They usually send out an email in, over the summer. So the next one on our list is, we don't really have any negotiations going on right now, so we don't need to fill that, the negotiation team. In the school board rep to the health benefit study committee, Kim, I don't know if that's really current anymore.
It's not. That committee dissolved before the last teacher's negotiations.
Right, right. The teacher eval. Yeah, okay, thanks. The teacher eval committee, that's still a current committee?
We haven't met.
That's not a committee defective.
Maybe the next, next year or two, we could, we could bring that back, because what we were trying to do is find a different way, looking at different models to do the evaluation, and that just disappeared.
Okay, well, let's revisit that once we come up for air from, from the current situation. The capital improvement program committee is still active. Al was on that last.
Yeah.
That's, that's actually a significant, yeah, Gary, I was gonna say, that's a significant committee, and I think you'd be perfect for that, having just come off the budget committee and understanding the capital improvement programs of the town and the school.
Yep.
We'll put Gary on that one. And then the last one is moot as well, because we've already got this paraprofessional contract. And then Elizabeth mentioned, we have, we have an ongoing communications committee and an onboarding committee. And Kim is on, on boarding committee and along with Elizabeth. We don't, don't have any, we don't have any board members currently on. I'm getting some background noise. We don't have any board members currently on the, on the communication committee, although Jen and Marty continuing to serve on that.
I could do that, Mike.
Are you interested in the communications?
I am, yep.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll put you down for that. And then, they're, they're pretty well populated, but I think it's important to have board members on there. And the other one is the, is the entry, entry plan committee. And the other one is the entry plan committee. Gary, are you interested in that?
What is that committee, again?
Mike, Elizabeth's here.
Yeah, it's pretty packed.
Actually, I'm sorry. I miss, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Kim and Elizabeth are already on that.
Right.
So we got that, we got that, we got that pretty well filled out.
Yeah, those are the superintendent committees, not board committees. So different than the other committees that you have established. Those are, those were established to support my goals, not the board. But yes, there's two active board members that are on my entry plan committee, so you couldn't have a superintendent, because then you would have a forum.
Okay. I think we have the committees populated, Susan. Are we missing anything here?
Nope, I don't think so.
And the next on the agenda is the student rep report. We're gonna forego that. There's not really much to report on. She may try to connect with her colleagues, as we're doing now remotely, and see what announcements may be pertinent for the next meeting. In terms of school board committee reports, Susan, we spoke last week, but I haven't been able to connect with you on the building construction. Last I heard from talking with Ekman folks early last week, they were gonna continue the construction. I don't know if you have any updates on that.
Yes, I spoke to them last week, and they're gonna continue on. They know that they need to access the building from the separate area. They won't need to go into the occupied spaces where we would normally engage in teaching and learning, so everyone on the staff is currently healthy, and we agreed to just keep in touch to make sure that we're able to support each other through this process. So I think we're in pretty good shape. Everything seems to be moving forward, and feels that this situation is not gonna delay the completion of any of the projects that we have currently ongoing.
Okay. And there, I believe, is a trailer meeting, a bi-weekly trailer meeting tomorrow, which I plan to attend, so if I, I'll give the board an update, and we can update, again, the community at the next meeting, which will be a week from this Thursday. So we're still, the plan is still to, I guess the silver lining is is that they can work in there without worrying about noise right now, so perhaps they can even wrap up a little sooner. They were originally scheduled to be done right around the end of March, beginning of April, but I have a better idea on that tomorrow after we meet. Then the, we'll talk about the communication and entry plan committee's reports down on the agenda. Susan, next up is your report.
Yeah, I just thought I would give a little update on our remote learning plan progress. So as you know, we launched on Wednesday, and all of our efforts has gone into supporting families and staff as they learn how to navigate in this new environment. So each day, we tackle a new topic, and we try to communicate out decisions that we make around policy, that we better understand some of the challenges, or concerns, or new information that we get from the state. And, you know, I couldn't be any prouder of both the team that's been working to do a lot of the planning, including the teachers' union, Joanne Lazarus, you know, and the entire administrative team, Jason, Carrie, the principals, the assistant principals, Erica, myself, and Linda Hopi joins us every other day to give us updates on how things are going there. So we continue to meet daily, and based on what we're hearing boots on the ground, we're providing direct support to parents, as well as, you know, we've been able to deliver all the packages over the past week, and, you know, now we're thinking about, you know, the likelihood that this will launch in a few weeks, which is imminent, and so we're beginning to plan for what this might look like more long-term, and what we need for support. So that's where we're at. And, you know, like I said, I couldn't be any, you know, more pleased with, you know, our efforts administratively, as well as with teachers and, you know, parents, asking good questions, trying to respond to them. When we get a, you know, a theme of questions going, then I try to respond to it, you know, on a, you know, more public scale. If one or two are thinking it, then I figure more than one or two are, have that on, that topic on their mind. So that's where we're at, and this week, you know, our focus is really on how do we, how do we move forward for a longer-term, remote learning environment for our community and our staff? What support do people need? You know, what kind of tools can we support? How do we build the capacity of parents and students and teachers to be able to effectively communicate and collaborate in this environment? We're having conversations about if we get to the point where Massachusetts is, how do we go to the next level of remote work environment, where we don't have all of the tools in place to do that? We're working on acquiring those tools and equipment, so that we can, if we had to shut down in a more significant way, we'd be able to keep things going. The commissioner today did reiterate that if we did go to a shelter in place, that, you know, teachers and educators are considered essential staff, because they would not be shutting down education as a whole, public education as a whole. And so we would have to continue to provide learning for our kids. So there's a lot of, you know, challenges that we're, you know, trying to figure out how we're gonna navigate. And each day, we pick up another topic or two, and, you know, confidence that we'll find ourselves on the other side of this eventually. And there'll be things that we've gained out of this that we otherwise wouldn't have, and there's things we'll have to, you know, kind of let go of, because there's no way to be able to deliver the same kind of a learning experience for kids without proper, longer-term planning. And so, you know, like I said, we're all in the same boat, doing the best we can, and I think we're in a good place.
Susan, this is Gary. I know this is gonna throw our budget completely in turmoil, because we have no idea what's gonna happen. Have we looked into trying to just kind of go into winter mode or shutdown mode in parts of the building to conserve as much as we can in particular areas, such as electricity, heating? Anything we can do without affecting, obviously, the staff that needs to be there?
Well, right now, of course, we still have the building project going on at the junior senior high school, and most of our, you know, supplies and food delivery are coming out of the elementary school. So, you know, we're kind of, have two different reasons for keeping the two buildings open, but we'll be mindful of that as we move forward. It's not been on the top of my mind, to be honest with you, with all the other things going on. I know that Dave Jack is with us, and has prepared a financial update, and has a couple of things on the agenda.
Hi, Susan, this is Mike Kennison. I was on mute, and I just tried to speak, but I just want to, on behalf of the board, express our appreciation for the difficult situation that everybody's in, all the work that's been done to make remote learning a success so far. I know it's a dynamic thing, and we're continuing to learn, but I know that everybody's been working around the clock, somewhat literally, to make this happen, and to make it as seamless as it can be, and also being there to troubleshoot, you know, just every aspect of, you know, from administration, teachers, paras, custodial staff, IT, has really come together to make this work, and I just want to appreciate all the extra effort that you've been putting in. It's pretty, it's heartening, and it doesn't go unnoticed.
I'd also like to thank Linda Hopi and all the kitchen staff for feeding all those kids during this time, and they have been going out every day, getting the food out, getting things ready, which I truly appreciate, and they've been working with the community members to help that happen.
Is there any questions or comments on Dr. Givens' presentation?
I guess I would just ask, is there anything the board can do to help you and the staff? And is there anything you guys are missing, needing, that we need to try to expedite?
I think that each and every day, you know, I say to the team, you know, we have to keep it simple, that our focus is on providing engaging learning experiences for kids, and building the capacity of everyone around us to be able to, you know, communicate and collaborate, like I said. So I think right now, we're just, we're just really trying to focus on the essentials, and we'll get to some of the administrative pieces as we move forward. And as I see a need in other areas, as we're able to kind of raise up and look at it on a broader scale, then, you know, at that time, that perhaps we would need some support doing some of the other work that's gonna need to take place. You know, I've been working with Elizabeth on, you know, how do we keep the community feeling like a community? How do we build community within the home? Many families are then turned upside down, you know? Some parents have been laid off, and some are working remotely, and they have multiple kids at home, you know? Some of our community members, you know, perhaps will, you know, get the virus. And at that time, how do we, as a community, support that family? They wouldn't be able to come out and access, let's say, food. So, you know, some of the programs we're putting in place administratively are, you know, each of us as administrators will have, you know, divide up our staff and staying constant contact with them, so giving weekly phone calls to check in, to make sure that our staff, you know, are getting what they need, and their families are supported. And then likewise, we're putting together a list, and we're gonna divide up the students and their families, and contact each family on a weekly basis to make sure that they're getting their needs met, and they're having contact with the person. Not about their educational needs, but about their social and emotional needs, as well as any other needs, so that we can help, you know, provide them whatever resources, or at least point them in the direction. I mean, we have counselors on staff, we have psychologists on staff, you know? We have a way to get folks food through the 68-hour program, and so it's just staying in touch with our community and finding a way to support everybody as we move forward. The longer this goes on, the greater the needs are gonna be. So I think as this starts to scale, the community support aspect of this is gonna be, is gonna be a big part of helping everyone get through this time. As we have to socially distance ourselves, how do we continue to create community? So Elizabeth's kind of taking the lead on that, and I thank her for all her work in that area, but, you know, I suspect that more hands-on deck in that area is gonna be needed as we move forward. So, thank you for asking.
Any other thoughts or comments from the board? Okay. Dave, if you're still with us, I know you've prepared a financial update.
I am still with you, and I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Loud and clear.
Perfect. In your packet was a one-page spreadsheet, which starts off with where we are revenue-wise, and in the bottom of that same page are all the expenditures by function code. The good news is, and there's always good news, your revenues are where they should be. In some cases, we're going to have a little more than we expected, which is good, but they seem to be in line with what you projected in your budget. So that really is, anytime I look at expenditures, that's the first place I go to, because we often forget that. The second piece is the expenditures in general. So what you have on the page is where we were as of February the 29th. I'm gonna preface any comments that I make tonight on this by saying that, this is, as we all know, we're in an area where we've not been before. We still have a significant part of the year to run out with the budget. At the same time, we don't know how that year will go. We're, you know, we know for the next two to three weeks how we're gonna operate, and it may, there may be more after that. So the pieces that I'm gonna look at, what I would suggest is that we update you on a monthly basis, just to keep you in the loop in terms of what we're seeing at that particular time. When I looked at it in February, or at the end of February, and I projected out where I thought you might end up, the good news is, is you were going to have a balance, I believe, at the end of the year. I'm always conservative when I estimate this, because I still have a third of the year to go. And as I said before, we're in uncharted waters as far as going forward in this type of environment. So I'm believing that at this point in time, we would have somewhere in the vicinity of $400,000 to $500,000. It may change significantly, because we don't have some cost. On the other hand, there are gonna be some additional costs that we didn't anticipate going through this budget. I'm hoping that, as we go along here, that there is, and I would suggest there is enough to see your way through this year in terms of what you have to deal with, what could be on the horizon. But there could be those things that we've not seen before. In terms of addressing Gary's concern about shutting down portions of the school, I think that's pieces that we still have to kind of review and go through to see exactly what that would do for us. But at the same time, I think that in terms of being able to work your way through the situation that we're in today, I think you're in a place where, that you can achieve where you want to be, hopefully by the end of the year, as long as there aren't any major curveballs that we're not seeing. I'm not seeing anything in here that would lead me to believe that what we're stating tonight isn't reasonable to achieve by the end of June. But at the same time, I would also say that it's important that we keep this dialogue up, so you're completely apprised of what's going on.
Are there any...
Hang on, let me put it down. Did that help?
Yep, that's better. I'm asking you to look at your crystal ball, but at a high level, given the situation, what general areas do you anticipate may be affected budget-wise in this situation?
So the types of things that come up are, in a lot of cases, if we, if this is a continuing thing throughout the end of the year... There won't be the expenditures you thought there were going to be there. There are other areas where, you know, continuing to be able to service students from a, from a different aspect, I don't know what other costs, if you have all the technology you need and so forth. So those are things I think about. You've been through, in terms of heating and so forth, you're almost through the worst part of the year, so the actual savings there would be somewhat less than if this absolutely were to happen sooner and we were to close down parts of the building, but even then you would still have to heat it in order not to lose piping and that type of things. So those are kind of the areas, the supplies, to some extent, there could be some savings there. I just don't know in this environment what all the additional costs will be.
Right. Other comments from the board on the quarterly report?
I was just going to ask about the transportation. Go ahead, Kim.
Dave, your speaker's, your speaker's causing an echo.
I was just going to briefly say, Dave, I would appreciate the monthly updates as we are in these uncharted territory, where we are and make sure we're still online, so I appreciate that.
Will do.
And I was just going to quickly ask, yeah, I agree with Kim 100%. And then, do we know if transportation costs are, these contracts include actual, you know, transportation, or whether it's just a fixed fee for the rest of the contract period?
Let me, I'm just going to turn my speaker down a little bit so there's no echo. What the transportation contract obviously entails is, the bulk of their costs would be driver wages and so forth, and even though this is a contract to us, we've continued with that contract presently going forward. Where there might be some advantage going forward, might be a relook at the actual fuel consumption at the end of the year that was part of that contract, and I think that, that First Transportation would be receptive to something like that. So there are some opportunities there.
I was just going to say, judging by what's left, there's no huge savings even anticipated there, I don't see.
Can you, can you repeat that, Gary?
I was just going to say, judging by what we're estimating or what's encumbered, there isn't even going to be a huge savings for that, because it seems like a lot of our, a lot of the budgets already been expended, so.
That might not be a completely fair statement, since we pay them on an equal amount, 10 equal payments, so the fuel could be built in, would have been built into that, and so there would be an adjustment, if you will, at the end.
Great, thank you.
One related question or observation I had, Dave, and I don't know how this works, and again, it's uncharted territory. If you have a situation like this, and if you were not using the service, essentially because we aren't, is there anything in the contract which, you know, would, you know, reflects that, you know, that there's a credit or some such thing? And if not in this contract, maybe something we'd consider going forward, since this was kind of unanticipated?
I'm.
I think that might have been a hard-to-hear question.
I'm not sure there was anything in your contract, I don't think anybody anticipated this. That's not to say, going forward, when you either re, when you bid the contract again or, or perhaps next year, and I'm going to talk about next year's extension a little further down in the agenda, I think one of the concerns is, just like every place else in the nation, is we're trying to keep people working, they're trying to retain their services through this. I think we're just trying, and in most cases, the contracts that, that are with, with transportation carriers, I think everybody's looking at the same thing, and then they're looking at those pieces where they can help us. If we need the buses in some communities, the buses are being used to deliver meals and so forth, or to pick up things. So there, there are some other ways that they've been working around it, but they're trying to get through a difficult situation, as are we, and certainly, I think you've enjoyed the relationship you have with, with First Transportation. So I think, knowing this and going forward, I think you'd be probably more likely to have some language within your contracts, so that everybody walked into this with their eyes wide open, as opposed to the way that we're looking at it today. So I think that's where you are at this time.
I think the other transportation that's worth noting is that, in order for them to provide transportation and use modern vehicles, they have huge investment in fixed costs in order to serve this field. And so even though we're shut down and they're not transporting, they still have a significant investment in their equipment, and they still have to pay that. And when they enter into these multi-year agreements, they depreciate those over the course of the life of the contract. And so, you know, that's another part of the, a huge part of a transportation contract is managing those fixed costs. And then, of course, most of the drivers are residents here of Newmarket, so, you know, even though their paycheck comes from First Student, they're residents in our community. So, you know, we're trying to be reasonable, you know, with them, as are other superintendents in school districts around, because there really aren't multiple vendors out there that can provide transportation. And what you don't want to have happen is to see them, you know, go, you know, go out of business because they're not able to pay their bills, and then we wind up with no transportation contractor in the area. So I think it's, it's just, you know, a long, short-term gains will lead to long-term challenges if we don't support, you know, our vendors through this. So for all the reasons, we're going to continue to pay our contract to the end of the year, both because we have, our agreement has been in place, and we want to retain them in the long run, and they were really good to us in terms of our renewal for next year, but Dave will get to talk about that in a few minutes.
And I think what's important, too, is they want to keep the drivers they have, because if they don't have a job, they will go out and look for other jobs, and then we will have no drivers when this does end. So I think it's important that we pay so that they can pay.
Any other questions on the quarterly report? If none, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
And, okay, so next, on the agenda, the committee updates, I don't know, I believe there haven't been meetings since our last meeting in light of the situation, and is that, is that correct, Susan?
Actually, both committees have met since the last board meeting. The Communication Committee closed their survey and met, that's the results of that. And that was, let's say, I don't know, maybe 10, before, before things got too challenging here. So that's been their focus, and, you know, taking a moment to reflect on the focus groups or the forums to, you know, kind of talk about, was it, was it worth, you know, based on the attendance, was it a, was it a communication method that seemed to draw, you know, attention to folks? Did they find that to be? And of course, both of them, there was probably maybe 25 people at the first one, and maybe just a little shy of that at the second one. It didn't get the volume of participation that we had hoped for, but it doesn't mean that it wasn't effective, nonetheless, because these people that came would have had a conversation perhaps with somebody else. And so, you know, we had a little bit of a conversation about that. So that's where we're at. The feedback from the community is, is that, you know, they would like to see, you know, information on our website that's current and easy to find, and pretty categorically, people felt that they were using more word of mouth to learn about what's going on in the school district, in part because it was challenging to find information on our website. So we've taken that into consideration, and we're in the process of doing a rebuild of our website. Patricia Kinsella and Jason have been the points people on that, and, you know, Jason right now is not going to be able to provide, you know, much support for that, because he had, he focused his attention on supporting remote learning, but Patricia is going to keep that as a target area for her to continue to work on. So hopefully, we will have a new website in place before the year's out, and we're all pretty excited about that. And there were two meetings of the entry plan committee, but I think we've met the last couple of weeks. Elizabeth or Kim, do you want to give an update on that, or you want, you want me to continue?
I think you can, Susan, because it was more you and Patricia.
Yeah.
Just to go over more information.
Yeah. So at the Entry Plan Committee, we've been trying to identify 10 communities that we would compare ourselves to. And so Patricia was gathering data from a whole range of sources, you know, Department of Revenue, the Department of Education, and federal sources, to help us define who our comps would be. But as we're going forward, you know, if we're looking to benchmark, that we're benchmarking, not against Manchester, not that there's anything wrong with benchmarking against them, but they're, they're sitting for one, and they look very different, both in size, in wealth, and in demographics. So we were, we were able to come up with those 10 comp communities, and those are the ones we'll use when we're doing pretty much everything. And it's not to say that we want to aspire to be like the average, it's, it's just a benchmark. I think that we have the capacity to be better than any of them, but right now, we want to see where we measure in relation to those, so that we have a sense of maybe where we want to move forward in private areas. So those, those communities, we shared out with the group, and, and then we looked at some, some of our, you know, some of your typical metrics that you use when comparing schools and performance, so dropout rates. We looked at, you know, some performance measures like SAT scores, and we're going to continue to look at, at some of those outcomes and see how our students are doing, and we'll do that in relation to these 10 comp communities. So we haven't done that part, comparing other communities to where we are in comparison to them, but we have looked at how we compare to the state, and we share that information out. So that'll all be part of the entry plan report when it's published, but those were the, teaching and learning was the first of four areas that we were taking a look at as we evaluate where we stand. So that's the update on those committees.
Okay, any questions or comments? All right, if none, we need to move on to approval of the minutes for the March 5, 2020 meeting. Can I, I'm seeking a motion for approval of those minutes, they're in our packet.
So moved.
Can we, let's say our names.
Elizabeth McKinney, so moved.
Is there a second?
Kimberly Shelton, second.
Any, any comments or edits to the, to those minutes? If, if none, all those in favor, we have to do this by roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes.
Gary Swanson, abstain.
Kimberly Shelton, aye.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Mike, is the point of order, sorry. Amy and I, since we weren't at that meeting, have to abstain?
That's, that's right. Thanks, thanks, Gary. I'm getting a lot of static, it sounds like somebody in the background has had some background noise. Can we make sure that we, yeah, there it goes. Okay, so next, the approval of the manifest, we don't have those. Andy, Susan, do you have those at the meeting, or at the?
I, I do, Mike. Do you want me to read the amount?
Sure.
Do you typically read the total manifest, or do you read it by manifest type?
We typically read the total.
Okay. So the total of all manifests since the last meeting came to $580,673.64.
And I'd seek a motion to approve the manifest in that amount?
So moved.
Gary Swanson, second.
Any comment? If none, all those in favor, if by roll call vote, Mike Kennison, yes.
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
And I think I heard Gary.
Yeah, Gary Swanson, yes.
Okay. Here with me. Next on our agenda is the transportation contract. Dave, do you want to speak to that? I know we have your, your brief memo in the file.
Yes, thank you. In the file, I did put a memo in there. We asked First Transportation to extend the contract as it is today for one additional year. In the past, the increase had been 7.3%. That increase, I think, was based on a long, a longer-term contract that you folks had with First, that took in all of the pieces for buses and the, all their costs over a five-year period. At any rate, they've extended the contract and have asked for an additional 4.5% increase, which fits within the amount that you budgeted for your FY '21. Certainly, it is under what you have in that, in that area, so we would recommend that the, that the school board vote to approve the contract for one additional year.
Mike, Gary, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the proposed 4.5% First Transportation contract.
And is there a second?
Elizabeth McKinney, second.
Second and Dave. We've got a motion and a second. Dave, just one question, I presume that that amount, you believe, based on your experience in New Hampshire, is reasonable under the circumstance?
I'm glad that when we asked for this, it was before we arrived at the point we are today. Certainly, I think this was more than fair at that time. I think going forward, this is, is a very good contract for the year that we're going, for the year that we're going into, because we hopefully will be coming out of where we are, and that certainly will have some ramifications, but this contract is, is made more favorable toward us.
Thank you, Dave. Is there, are you, are there comments?
I just got to point out, this is Gary, that using round numbers, we're talking $700,000 in transportation, this is about $31,000, so.
Yep. Any other comments, questions? If none, by roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes?
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay, we're on to item D, approval of the 2020-21 school calendar. We've seen that before. We saw it at the last meeting. I'd open it up. Are there any questions or comments since we've digested that calendar? If none, I'd seek a motion to approve that school calendar for 2020-2021.
So moved. Elizabeth McKinney.
Gary Swanson, second.
I have no further comment. By roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes?
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Okay. Let's see. Susan, I think I'm going to defer item E, because we may need to go into non-public, and I'd go to item F, acceptance of resignations. And Susan, can you speak to that?
Sorry, I forgot to turn my mic on. Yes, so we have two resignations. One is Emily Lauer, who is, has been on leave of absence, a maternity leave, childbearing leave, and she and her husband are relocating. And so she is resigning from her position and will not be returning. So we'll be posting her music teacher in the next couple of weeks. And the second one is the Assistant Treasurer. So right now, the treasurer is elected at town meeting, but the Assistant Treasurer, I guess, is appointed by the board. And in, I guess, Dave has worked out an arrangement with the town that their treasurer will be our Assistant Treasurer, and our treasurer will be their Assistant Treasurer, so that we're doing our shared services arrangement by partnering with the town, so that if something should happen to our treasurer, their treasurer would be our Assistant and vice versa. So I thought it was a rather brilliant solution. And so Edith will be, has resigned, and there's a note in here for you to appoint the town's treasurer to be our Assistant Treasurer. And that's from Dave.
Okay. First of all, thanks to those. Thanks to Edith and Emily for their service to the district, and wish them well in the future. Secondly, I'd seek a motion to appoint Belinda Camer as Assistant Treasurer for the New Market School District. You can see Dave's letter at page 19 of the materials.
This is Gary Swanson, so moved.
Kimberly Shelton, second.
Are any questions or comments? If none, by roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes?
Elizabeth McKinney, yes. And I would just like to thank Edith, Edie, we call her Edie Bodett, for all her years of her service.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes. And many thanks to Ms. Lauer for the music that she brought to the district.
Yes. Okay. Next, I think we need to go into non-public pursuant to RSA A:3, Roman 2C. May I have a motion to go into non-public?
I make the motion to go into non-public. Elizabeth McKinney.
Second, Gary Swanson.
By roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes?
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Susan, just let us know when we are, we're actually...
Okay, we're ready to rock and roll.
Okay, we're back in public session. It's 8:03. And I'm seeking a motion to approve the recommendation of the administration for certified teachers.
So moved. Elizabeth McKinney.
Second. Gary Swanson.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes.
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
The certified nominations are approved unanimously. I don't know if we have any other further business. Susan, is there anything else?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeking a motion to adjourn.
So move. Gary Swanson.
Second, Elizabeth McKinney.
Roll call vote. Mike Kennison, yes.
Gary Swanson, yes.
Elizabeth McKinney, yes.
Amy Tilton, yes.
Kimberly Shelton, yes.
Thanks all. Take care.
Thank you.
I say next time we try Zoom.
Thank you.
Good. Bye.
Bye.